The council meeting will come to order. At seven PM. All right, Russell?
Here.
David?
Microphone's on.
Kimmy? Ray?
Here.
Congress, do you leave me on the page?
Sure. Father God, we love you with all of our heart. We give thanks for the many blessings of our life. Lord, we ask for the filling of your Spirit tonight. Lord, grant us wisdom in our choices, righteousness in the things we do. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, the citizens comments, uh, Steve Taylor.
Hey, Mayor, Council. Uh, Steve Taylor, we live on Shelton Lane, my wife on Anheal. And, uh, over the last couple of years, we've gone through, um, probably know, you know, type one tree outs here and down. And I just wanted to be able to give a, an update on status of, of success of that so far. Hopefully something positive, you know, for you to hear. Um, so we, we had about two years of construction. We opened in May of, of last year, which has been open about eighteen months or so. We've now got about ninety percent occupancy over that time. Um, you know, it's surprising, we're very happy that, uh, they're not, not successful and we bought some extension to town. Now, over that time, uh, just a couple of tidbits to kind of show you some of that success. I think we've had over probably about a million dollars in, in economic benefits today area through the treehouse, through the entrance taxes, through the hospitality taxes that we provided, through the, the tourist, uh, action to the town. Uh, so we brought in people from twenty-one different states. Just an example, this is pretty shocking, the need of my current guests right now, uh, from Destin, Florida, like the last days. Coming to small town Ladonia, you know, from those two big vacation spots in the United States, so, so that's pretty exciting. They, they just flew in just for the treehouse and then gone back, you know, tomorrow. So, it's pretty exciting. A hundred percent safety record, everything's going great. Uh, very good response, uh, we're the number one area treehouse in Texas. So, we got a hundred percent, five star reviews from all of our guests, so we've been really excited with that. Uh, some, some of y'all may not know that, uh, my brother-in-law, you know, he died in the line of duty as a firefighter, um, in Arlington, so we've always tried to raise money in his name. So, if, if, uh, Chief Starks can come up here. We, what we do is we, we collect, um, money in, you know, my, my brother-in-law's name, brother-in-law's name, Don, Don Hall. So, we collect money from our guests and then we match those funds. So, tonight we have a check for fifteen hundred dollars for the fire plan.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Robert Carter.
I'm out of medical, so I don't know, besides, I was working on my labor and had water at the beginning of two years, on Church Street. I'm a pro-ator a long ago. And I applied, and I found a woman, wanted to get water.
Who's your neighbor?
What's the address?
Who's your neighbor?
You know what the address is?
Well, I ha- I didn't know nothing about you, so we'll have to look into it tomorrow. I said, we, we can look into it tomorrow. Have they been into the office?
Yes. They've, they've been advised, they need a bore and a tap.
I don't want to, can they issue a water line?
Tell them. Uh-huh, I understand that they need a bore and a tap.
They need to be tapped on, they need to be tapped onto the water line. Tapped onto the water line. They have to pay for a water tap. Yes, and they've been made aware. They've been made aware.
They shouldn't have typed that sign. That's on the, is it the side?
No.
It's on their side of the street, the path, isn't it?
The tap is across the street, they have to have a bore, they have to have a bore. I don't know, previous owners disconnected that.
If you need a tap, you have to pay for a tap. If you need a tap, you have to pay for a tap.
You shouldn't have, uh, spring water there before, shouldn't have, make it far below than, you know.
If there was a tap, they could just. What, does he know the address?
Robert, say it again, they're, they're trying to write down the address. They're trying to write the address down, say it louder. Okay, your address.
It's still part of my house, but still I think it would be. Maybe it should have been, it should have never been, uh, your house, but the tap, the tap is disconnected. It should have been before, it should be a.
The house is torn.
Besides that, it's on the city side.
I don't know.
The water meter, if, if the water meter was in, if it had no water meter in, line on that side would be the person, you know, uh, in the part over here is looking for water to it, maybe, it'd be on the city side.
You're talking about if it's connected, yes, that's. Wait one second.
Okay. Church Street, house on that side, meter across the street. Uh, whatever reason, the people who own the property prior to pulled the line that was bored underneath Church Street. So, there is no line going from that property under the road to that, to where the meter was.
It took it out from under the road?
Yes. I have no idea. Don't know, it was years ago.
My point, Danny Harris owned that property.
Right. But there's, there's goes, they call sign, go from there.
Water, water. They got, they got, uh, it was all you did, they need water. All y'all got water, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody in here's got water, uh, uh, they should give all the water there for it to, to connect.
There's a water line, there is a water line, it's over each door. They just need to pay the board to be, to have it.
She said.
Water line is across the street, here's the water line. Their house, they do not have a, 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 that was under the road. We had, Patterson came out. There's not correct, there's no, there's, whoever owned this property at one time, for some reason, had this sign pulled. Okay. City's not gonna pull a bore. I don't know. But why would the city pull out a bore, fine? The meter is there, the meter. What guy? Okay, we haven't had anybody working for public works in over a month, and you said it was there, okay, basic, okay.
We're gonna have to get information on it.
Patterson's already looked at it.
I understand, we gotta get information.
I just think it's somebody on that, 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 wouldn't be the question, you know, problem, because it's, 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 unless you want, unless you want them to put out there, start digging down and tap into the water line.
This is the first week, this is the first I've heard anything about it. Why haven't they come in and talked to us?
I thought they talked to the partners.
They, yeah, they, they've been made aware. That they need a bore, tap, they need their line bored from their property under the road to our line, to our water line.
How much is that?
I don't remember, it's been so long ago. But the customer has to pay the tap.
It should all have one.
Because there was a water meter, he said, because there was a water meter, they should add a tap.
We're well past that.
Okay, uh, we'll check in, in it tomorrow and see what we can do, okay?
I just thought I'd bring it up, there was, been two years since we've been around the gathering, so.
Well, spring be mine. Okay, thank you. John Gollan.
Um, I was gone, I did go on, and I listened to the budget on Todd Made online, and I didn't get to hear all of it, so I'd like to know, how can I understand, or when are you going to put it in for people, what, online, or what are you gonna do so people know about the budget?
Minutes.
The minutes?
Yeah.
Minutes, not until they get approved until placed?
I understand, that's what I, I was saying. So, the minutes will be, should be approved tonight, unless there's other issues, and they'll be posted.
The approved budget itself is online.
Approved budget is, yeah.
And where would I find it at? I don't want to talk to you, where would I find it?
I'm assuming the, the city website. It should, it should be on the city website. Everything should be on the city website from this point.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, next, we're gonna do, uh, consent agenda, minutes of the September twenty twenty-two meetings.
Madam Mayor, on the Monday, September twelfth, minutes.
Run.
It references someone named John Scottnick.
Yes.
What is his role?
He's the judge for Bonham.
We assume he's on, he's in a jury.
Maybe he's in a jury.
Is there any more discussions?
We have to accept the minutes for September twenty twenty-two meetings.
Just have a second. One second. All in favor? Um, okay. Financial reports for September twenty twenty-two. Is there any questions, ma'am?
We have to accept the financial report for September twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Russell? Accounts payable for October.
Madam Mayor, there's an item under General Cut logic, sixteen seventy-two.
Police Department.
Uh, what's the utilization, what's the utilization on that, for our employees?
No, but we have to keep it. Or we couldn't pull any of the parts.
Is there not still stuff pending on that?
That's why we have to keep it.
I'm just saying, is there stuff, uh, something that, no, something that was purchased or something, is that a little different?
No, that's different. That's the grant, this is except for the grant.
Any more questions? I have one, are we keeping up with the cricket?
Um, actually, we have, we're, she's.
So, we don't, is, okay, no.
And that was one for the city?
Yeah, that was for the, for the work.
Any more discussions?
I have to accept the accounts available for October twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second? Debbie seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will, uh, have the lady from, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-two ten seventeen, adopting Fannin County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Hi.
Good evening, I'll turn here so everybody can hear me. My name is Stephanie Davidson, and I'm with Texas Senate Council of Governments, I'm the Emergency Planning and Criminal Justice Program Manager. About eighteen months ago. I don't sound it. Okay, can you hear me better? Okay. About eighteen months ago, we came to the city of Ladonia, along with all the other jurisdictions in Fannin County. The county had applied for a hazard mitigation grant to update the countywide hazard mitigation plan. We came, uh, the city of Ladonia, uh, approved a resolution to participate. Uh, since that time, we have had a couple of meetings with Ladonia to talk about the natural hazards that affect the region. The plan has been finished, this is a physical copy, there is a digital copy on a thumb-dropping side. This plan is good for five years. It is a FEMA-approved plan, and by having a FEMA-approved plan, it qualifies the jurisdictions that participate, uh, the opportunity to apply for hazard mitigation grants. Fannin County has adopted it, and now we're just going out to all the jurisdictions that participated and the school districts, there's twenty-two, uh, to get them to pass the resolution adopting it as your official plan. It identifies the natural hazards like tornadoes, earthquakes, it has some history of what has happened in Fannin County over the years. Uh, it also has ways that we can work together to, uh, maybe mitigate or to not have these happen again. An example of this would be from a previous plan, Sam Rayburn ISB identified that a school safe room would help tornado, it would alleviate some of the damages from a tornado. Uh, we got the plan, the plan was adopted, some grant funds came available, Sam Rayburn applied, and now Sam Rayburn has a FEMA-approved tornado safe room on their campus. It was a seventy-five twenty-five split. We will be going to Fanninville next week, and they'll have the opportunity if they want to apply. You're under no obligation to apply for a grant, uh, these grants do come with matches, but you can't apply if you're not participating in the plan. I believe I worked with the fire department under the last plan, and we applied for some storm sirens. We didn't get the grant, but by Ladonia being a participant in the plan, we were able to apply. Any questions?
How about a tornado warning?
Yes, that was, that was the siren that we applied for. FEMA is not real big on funding the tornado sirens. Uh, the argument is that people hear them and they go outside to see what's going on. Uh, really, the whole purpose of them was to tell people when they're outside to go inside. So, they, they go off and on on whether they'll fund those. Uh, some of the other things, especially smaller jurisdictions, are interested in, is sometimes they apply for the generators. I think the city of Leonard is applying for some generators. And that was, that would hit multiple hazards, you know, everything from the winter storms, tornadoes.
Is the school open for, uh, off-school time for people to go in for shelter?
The Sam Rayburn one? Yes, they open it up. There, um, some of the, I'm not for sure if theirs has the time release, some of the more modern shelters, you know, depending on how much money they want to put into it, have it, where it'll automatically open, that, you know, there's a code that they can put in remotely and just open it for the community. But Sam Rayburn does make it open to the community, uh, that gives some points when applying for a FEMA grant, is the fact that they will open it up to the community. I have some of my business cards here, I can leave. If you have any questions about this or any other programs that we have at T-CO, I'd be happy to try to assist. Any questions? I just ask that you approve the resolution to adopt the plan as your official plan for Ladonia.
Is there a timeline that it has to be adopted?
We have, uh, we have, so the calendar days started at ninety days at the time FEMA approved it. Time it came back to us to get the approval, we had to get it on the county docket, we are running out of time. So, it has to be to FEMA by October the twenty-third. So, any, any jurisdictions that do not apply or do not approve it by October twenty-third, will have to wait till the next opportunity, which, these plans are updated every five years, but we, Fannin County does not have the resources to pay for these plans updated, so we have to wait for grant opportunities to come to update them. So, usually, they're about six years apart.
This ain't no cost to the city, or anything, right?
No, no, the cost.
All this is is a benefit.
It opens the door for some funding for the city. Uh, the, the cost of the plan has been covered with a FEMA grant, and there was a match on it, and the county is taking care of that for all the jurisdictions and school districts.
Y'all want to discuss it?
Madam Mayor, I remember, right, my only concern about that resolution when we, uh, first looked at it was that it called for a public hearing. I believe that was.
The public hearings were held on the front end of it and held during the thing with the county, that fell on the county, is the public hearing saying, if we need kind of light, kind of light needs.
Okay.
We did give a justification, but we did put it out there, uh, for it, and we are still willing to take feedback at any time if someone does, you know.
Well, this sounds really great just for emergencies, but what other little tidbits do you have in there with FEMA? I've done a lot of research on FEMA, but they are involved, so what other little tidbits? Fine, you don't have to answer it. Call me, I'll be happy to.
Okay, any things? Okay, we're gonna discuss it right now.
Okay. I'll just leave and I'll just call that off. We'll, we'll delay further.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two oh nine one nine, Fannin County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Any seconds? I'm seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And copy of this is on the T-CO website, and will be on Fannin County website probably within the next forty-five days.
No, we're just saying, we didn't have the resolution, and it's back, we had it previously. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. You have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Uh, next is the information reports, uh, utility, utility and public works departments, we have no information. Volunteer fire department?
Uh, many thanks to Chief Starks for his report, he's only volunteer fire department. Chief's report, September twenty twenty-two, total calls five, medical calls four, grass fires one, total volunteer hours thirteen hours thirty-three minutes, wire usage zero. In the month of September, we had our business meeting on the first Tuesday, followed, followed by two nights of training on the following Tuesday nights. The annual truck wagon breakfast went great, a big thank you to everyone who came out and supported us. Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department does not have any fundraisers planned for the month of October. Signed, Kyle Stark, Chief, Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next we'll go into the administrative department. Fossil Day will be October the fifteenth, Truck or Treat will be October thirty-first at five thirty PM on the square. Feeding Fannin County will be October the eighteenth and November the first, and Veterans' Day, the office will be closed November the eleventh. Uh, D, the police department? Ooh, that goes up, excuse me. Okay, uh, a member of the council had these questions, uh, for me, the police department. We have, uh, you want an update, correct? Okay, we have put several, uh, apps out for, uh, looking for them, we know how much that we can afford, I've talked to Upper Trinity to see if they will help us raise the, uh, money, 'cause most of the departments have had a raise in October, and they went from forty, uh, thirty-one something, 'cause that's what, what we can afford is thirty-one thousand four hundred to, uh, forty-five thousand, forty, let me see, forty-two thousand, I think it's the sheriff's department, forty-five thousand, I think it's the police department, and one of the little towns around us is doing fifty-two thousand a year with a ten-thousand-dollar bonus signing and sign-up. So, we can't very well match that unless we get some help. Permit inspection resource, I assume, are, which permits are you talking about?
Uh, well, when we canceled the contract with Bureau of Labor Toss, it was mentioned that another resource would be made available. I'm just curious what the process is for identifying that resource and getting them under contract. I'm just curious what the process is for identifying that resource and getting them under contract.
Just the one guy. Mark Hosey won't do it. There's a guy that's doing recon gaps. He hasn't called back yet.
He won't do it.
Won't do it?
So we're hoping that when we hire a police chief, that he will be able to do it.
Police chief not going to inspect.
Okay, excuse me.
They possibly do code enforcement.
Code enforcement, you are correct.
Two separate entities.
Okay, well, we'll just have to check more into that. Reprairs approved by October, August 22nd, 26th. Emergency meeting, you're talking about King Street?
13,000.
Yeah, the King Street is up and running. They put in new sewer lines. Are you all having any problems? Okay. They did a big portion of that street. And Public Works Department. We don't have any pay on that. I can tell you, we're trying to hire some people. We've done about six applications, I think now. But we'll just have to see how that pans out. Because we're going into close session to discuss that. Old business, discuss, consider, action on Taylor Street. I can tell you, on Taylor Street has been fixed.
The water repair.
Yes, the water repair. Well, the water repair is part of the street. Do you all think that running down there?
No, no, I agree with that part. Yes, it has.
Well, I can tell you what Upper Trinity told me today, but I would prefer not to. Because they're supposed to come next month for the meeting to present it to all the people. And we will vote on it then. Because I don't know what he told me might change or not change. But that's what I was told today. Because I had a short meeting with Janeway talking about the Taylor Street. He called me and asked if we had time to discuss it.
And that's actually the Taylor Street repair. The water lines are water lines. You know what I'm saying? But as far as Taylor Street repair, that's what we were going with Upper Trinity to try and get.
I understand, but right now it needs a lot of repair.
Oh, I understand.
Okay. Because, and hopefully we can get Magnus on it. Discuss and consider action about action at RBS software.
You don't have that motion for us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So is it the kind of repair that we need to be concerned about with him getting work sort of in the course of days?
No, I don't think he'd get any orders.
Have you seen Taylor Street lately? You don't drive your car down there?
We'll have to tow you out.
Probably.
Shouldn't it really close?
I would think so. But I'm going to call Magnus tomorrow and see if I can't get him to come down to grade. Because the water leak has run the road.
Between the water leak and the trucks, it has run the road.
Leave it like that. Go somewhere else.
I don't think the trucks would go down the road now.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do. But they go slower, so there's not as much dirt flying around.
And some of them stop at the side.
Yeah, some of them. We need maybe some cut holes near the stops on that.
If you are waiting on an updated report of the Trinity?
I am.
Then they should call the table and consider the meeting.
Okay, but that is again the council decision. So who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to table to discuss and consider action on Taylor Street repair until the next, the November meeting when Upper Trinity has said they will be there and make the presentation.
Yes, they're writing up something now. Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discuss and consider action on RBS software integration and for emails and auto pay. You can see what the votes were.
This is what I pulled from the online when it was on our website. If you'll notice, a lot of these are crossed out because people were voting multiple times as you can tell from the same IP address. So that's how we tally the scores of what... This is the one that was posted in the office on the window, as was asked. One no. 14 yeses, one no. Oh, yeah. I've got them wrote down on that paper.
Any discussions?
In the next two pages over. How much it costs?
This is basically a $300 cost for the city. And then if used differently or whatever, it changes. For the city's cost is $300.
Right.
And I guess that's the decision we got to make, the one spending $300. People who still want to do it the same way they're doing it right now, no change.
Right.
So if they want to use this system, then they have to abide by whatever parts that they take in.
This is a one-time $300, one-time fee?
Any concerns about, do we have to stop anything to stop doing what we're doing right now? Any costs associated with doing anything? Make a motion that we approve $300 for the next bill pay service for immediate implementation.
Any seconds? Hold on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Dee? Ray? Okay. Okay, the next is...
Republic sanitation?
Yeah, Republic sanitation contract.
Is that now over? I mean, it's...
Well, there's... We attempted to get some other quotes from other companies and never did. We'll tell you that Republic, if you read, it says in here...
I thought it said it was...
This letter is to notify you that although CPI is running at, it is technically, but we still have this contract. We can still get this contract with them since no others gave us theirs.
Is there any change in the amount?
No, there's not. I mean, there will be a change in what we're paying now, but not based on... I mean, it's the same as what it says in this packet right now.
Okay, so how much? Yes, how much is one trash can going to cost now? Is it going to go up to what?
It actually did not probably go up at all. It's about 475.
Up 485.
As you see, the once a week solid waste collection is 1481. Car rental is $7.12.
So what was it?
Seventeen and a quarter.
Total, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going up to 2195. So around just 22.
So five bucks. Nothing's going down. Is five-year extended contract, is that normal? What did they have before?
That's what they've always had.
So it's been five years since we renewed it?
But it hasn't been five more years since we...
The rates go up every year.
And we can't...
Based on their CPI.
Right, we can't determine the rates, but... And is there any way to get out of the contract? I didn't read that in.
Not for five years.
Not for five years. So basically, they have you over a trash can till five years or so. Whatever rates they so choose. Because I don't see any kind of... In June, they're going to do 3.5, I guess. It says it won't take place till January. Water, too, they're going to do 4.3.
It's the worst for the trash and bases, which is basically...
Wish somebody else would have put a quote in, but they didn't. It's getting there.
We asked for it.
They called, I think they called Sanitation Solutions.
It's a new company that called.
Yeah.
I've seen it with people.
Waste saving.
And, yeah, that's not what I understood. But don't quote me on that. That's just not what I understood. I thought it needed to be for, called them. Anyway, they said they would send a quote. I was actually contacting them about something else, but I found out they sold out.
With the 1795 that most people pay for one cart, did that include trash pickup too?
Yeah, that's the total. So when you look at that 14, they have it wrote down here as 1481 and 712.
Right.
We obviously just put it in.
And there's no wiggle room for us maybe to, we don't, us to?
No. If you read, it says the same rate.
I mean, us, because I thought once before when we were talking, we had added more to the rate a year or two ago.
No, this is their, that's their rate right now.
No, I'm talking about we did it ourselves, not...
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, you know what I'm talking about.
This is the 1481 and 712, if you add those up, it comes up on the 212.
Yes, I 2195, I believe. So I just hate it with things going up as high as it is. And money's getting scarce that our trash is going to cost so much. But I guess there's nothing we can do. Any more discussions?
You have to request it.
No, this is if, these are if they... Those are commercial containers.
Yeah, if they do these things, these are what the charges are.
There are people like the Pig and Whistle has a water container. The school has these, these two and four yard containers.
And my neighbor has two.
Yeah.
I will say this, if you don't live in the city, these rates are higher. The city does get a little bit of right, but I mean, we're kind of, we got you, so. So you give us a little bit better.
Need more discussions? Any motions?
If you didn't get any other bites, I guess make a motion to accept Republic Sanitation Services contract.
Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the ordinance, 2021-0809. International Residence Code. Can you explain what that is, international? I don't think it has anything... Oh, go ahead.
It is... I can explain it best on my end of it. Electrical, state of Texas nationally also has a national electric code. Spoke about that thing. And those codes are what you have to abide by when you're doing electrical work in the state of Texas. If it's accepted other places, then it's national or whatever. But it is the national electric code. This is something similar. A group came together and produced a national or an international residence code and an international building code. I have not, I mean, you could order the books online. And if you can go through them or whatever, you'll understand it maybe a little bit better, maybe not. There's a lot of information in there. There's stuff in there that I'm not real pleased with. Because I think it gives the government and the cities and all too much authority. That's my opinion.
Okay, is it a code that requires people to keep certain things up to a certain standard? Is that what the code is?
It can be, yes.
It's just not electrical, this is like a building code?
This is international building code, international residential code. So one thing that I... Something I don't like about it is the city has the authority to go out to a residence or a property academic. Basically, now, don't read into this more than what it is, please. Basically, though, it's on their decision. Now, there are laws that protect people. So I mean, they're going to be there no matter what. So... So, don't feel like, hey, the city's gonna come in and condemn my house. That's not necessarily true. But there are things in this code that, um... Give them a little bit of extra authority.
Well, Madam Mayor, both of the ordinances that were adopted last year by council state in the ordinance, the reason why it's important, and that is to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, and the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and demolition of such structures in the city of Ladona, Texas. So, I don't read that to say that that's what we would offhand do, is just go tear down buildings. But if they're unfit for public use, or unfit for safety, sanitary, and fit for occupancy, they're not buildings.
I'm in agreement with that. The only thing I disagree with it gives, gives the cities and the government a little bit more authority than I think they could have. Now, we, we did not have this previous to what? Year before, one year, two years ago?
Yeah, it was about the last September.
So what were we using before? Ordinances. We have ordinances, which we're fixing to go through soon, we hope, that should protect all this. That's what other, some other cities use, some, some cities have adopted this.
What is the city, what is the city gonna use?
I have no idea, but I can find out.
Okay, I know you've got a buddy of it. My concern, my concern about these two items is that we seem to be in a habit of casting to the side something that we don't like with nothing prepared to follow.
Again, we're going through our ordinances, and our ordinances are in place right now?
With no enforcement.
We have nothing of enforcement.
I agree.
So, I mean, we're in that same boat there, but as far as having a code to stipulate what we can and can't do versus our ordinances, you know, where do we need the ordinances for? Because this is gonna take over.
I would suspect we need the ordinances for things that aren't specifically addressed in here, like livestock. But I hear what you're saying.
This doesn't have anything to do with livestock.
I know, this, this addresses specifically what the requirements are for building a structure, whether residential or commercial.
We not have any ordinances on structures?
Sure, minimum square footage.
That's it?
There's, there's some more, but it doesn't, I'm sure it's not the only, you would know. Are our ordinances to the level of specificity of the International Residential Code?
No.
Okay.
But should they do?
If, if I'm gonna build a home for my family, I would rather have the International Residential Code as the standard than the Ladona City ordinances or safety, say. If our, if, if part of our job is to make sure that the things that are built in the city are up to standard, then we shouldn't look at each other as the experts in commercial or residential construction.
But I go back to this, other cities are not adopting this. Other cities are using their ordinances, and we use our ordinances. And we've got some structures that are not superior. There's no doubt about that.
Well, until we have something to replace these two documents, wouldn't it be wise to leave them in place?
You can leave them in place now, I mean, it makes me no difference.
I would just assume if somebody's...
We can afford them anyway, so...
If somebody is gonna build a home within a couple hundred yards of my house, I would rather know that it's up to code and something that's documented and that's used by other organizations, municipalities, cities, kind of governments. I mean, I hear what you're saying, the state has rules, you know, and if we care to go dig all those up, we could probably put them together, but here are two single concise references that people can refer to.
When you, when you get into the construction end of it, you, you have to be licensed to do plumbing. You gotta be licensed to do electrical. You gotta be licensed to AC. You know, so all these things in combination, you've got semi-protection there. And along with your building codes, I just think this is overkill. Uh, I think it gives too much authority to the city or the government. That's my opinion.
We're gonna have some people coming in here, uh, contractors, coming in to build some of the homes. And the first thing they're gonna wanna know is what kind, you know, what did he have in place? That's the first thing they're gonna ask. And then they're gonna wanna know what permits they have to have. They've gotta get their ducks in the road. So the city of Ladona has to have some structure, something in place. Because if not, you're gonna, and I'm sure Greg will agree with me, we're gonna get some fly-by-night people in here.
We already got them.
Um, you know what I'm talking about.
And they've had them, yeah.
Even, even people that are supposedly famous builders out of Dallas, Plano, Richardson, they're, they do some shoddy work.
I agree.
If you have a structure in place, whether it be what y'all are discussing, but it has to, it has to be something that is tangible, something that has some meat to it. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll let y'all make choices.
Uh, Sid, are you aware that houses that we live in on Oak Lane are not that white? Just thought I'd ask.
That, you know, it's, it's a good person, that's a good person to do. And, I mean, there was things done, like I said, there's things done by contractors that for one reason or another is not always, not always the right way of approaching. And we're gonna have a bunch of these people coming. One day, we're gonna wake up around here, and there's gonna be... They're already starting to cut, cut blocks in certain areas right now, as we're speaking.
In Ladona?
Around Ladona.
Yes, we went to a meeting the other night, and, uh, Ladona is low man on top of the problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is that, Madam Mayor?
Why is that? I don't know, uh, the investor, all the other little towns around us, uh, are, are just being bombarded by investors, and, uh, there's something getting meters, uh, daily. I forget how many they said they were getting. And, uh, I asked Greg when we were through, I said, are you aware of the one thing that Ladona doesn't have in common with any of these people in here? And I think he said no, right? And it's because we have no investors, we have no growth. In fact, we were told, if I'm not mistaken, that it would normally in growth, it takes twenty-seven years for us, for it to grow. That's what Opportunity told us the other day.
The thing is, right now, we, we don't have the investors here because we can't get answers from Opportunity on what they're, what they're actually be allowed to do. Once that breaks, once they know what that shoreline management plan is gonna be and all that, and they're going all wild, I mean, they're gonna be here.
I think we would all agree that it's better, better to measure twice than cut once. I mean, I would rather not, you know, try to throw our hat in too early. At the same time, I think, back, back on topic, I would... There are unintended consequences from almost anything. I don't know if anybody's ever thought about this, but just the fact that we don't have a permitting process in place right now. Somebody goes to sell their house, they're required to disclose that they had unpermitted work done on their house. That's a red flag for a buyer, which means the price of the house goes down, which means the overall value of homes in Ladona go down, which means that our tax base goes down, which means what has to happen whenever we need more money? We have to raise taxes. So I would, again, I think this is a measure twice, cut once, I would, I would motion, I would move to table both seven D and seven E until, I'm sorry, that's not right. Seven E and seven F until we have ordinances...
No, it's D and E.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the original.
About D and F?
Yes, until we have...
D and E.
D and E.
Sorry, I'm looking at E, I did have a different one, I was mistaken. Until we have a proposed replacement for the building codes that we currently have in place.
For residents and...
Can I ask a question? Does this affect people who already own homes in town?
Oh. Well, at this point, it doesn't anyway. So there's no permitting right there.
Well, there's permitting, there's no inspection.
Yeah, so, there's permitting, there's no inspection. I don't know, what our, what our, we need to do is work diligently on...
Well, I know, uh, Mr. Hamilton said that the first thing we need to do is start on the ordinances that affect the city, and the others could wait.
Yep.
Okay, uh, any, any motion, seconds?
All right, so I'll make a motion that we table the International Residence Code ordinance discussion until we have a potential replacement.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye. And same motion for the International Building Code ordinance.
Seconds? Yeah, any seconds? Okay, all in favor? Debbie? Nisha? Okay, uh, now we'll go to new notices. Mine doesn't say that that is discuss consideration of action with the International Building Code. Yeah. Any questions or what?
I didn't want to do that.
Oh, okay, discuss and consider action on Bill in Richard Street Road Repair. Patterson's supposed to be out Friday to look at it. Is his name Bray or Bray?
Bray.
Bray. I talked to a gentleman named Danny Bray today. No, it's not Danny Bray. He works for the Bray Company, his name was Danny. And he showed me pictures of what the, underneath the road looks like. And it's hard to tell if it's, some think it might have been, uh, cement culverts, some think it's, uh, tin horns. So anyway, he, uh, told me that he felt like it would be the smartest move for us to, uh, just put one long tin horn underneath the road over to where there's a place that's sinking, oh, about... Would you say six or ten foot from the fence? Right, about six or ten foot from the fence that is, uh, probably about four to six foot away from the road, right, what do you think? And, uh, and the tin horn goes all the way across and over there to that one that I was talking about, it's already started sinking. So we had to take one all the way across, is what I was told. The estimate was ten-five.
We're gonna get a, we're gonna get a true estimate.
But, uh, I, we haven't got Patterson yet, and they'll be out to give us another quote. Uh, we haven't been able to find the phone number from that other person.
Seven eight?
Yeah.
They don't answer.
Okay, so we only have two estimates. We'll have only two estimates.
Is this part of the road that was just done?
Uh, it's right out of the road.
It's past Richard, just a hair past Richard Street.
They're gonna use a plastic corrugated, uh, pipe instead of tin horn or the break or the construction. They'll give us two quotes, one, replace the pipe. Cover it with rock. We can do what we want to there. Or they'll give us another quote, replace it, put rock on there, and answer.
Any questions or decisions?
One other thing, though, I just forgot. Bray told me, he said, any question, y'all? I ain't telling you how to do your business or anything, but he said, I'm telling you in three weeks, we're starting a large job. And he said, I'm gonna have everybody pilot for about three months. And I said, well, I don't know if we can get you an answer by then, so...
What would you say? Oh, we have to call the special unit.
What, what kind of situation is it? Is it passable, is it an emergency?
Well, it's concerning because we don't know how weakened the school buses and/or cars could fall through it.
With the game.
Biggest concern is the school bus that'll crash down. And we know about two feet off the edge of the road, there's a hole in it, in the asphalt.
Huge, huge.
And then underneath that is a caper.
Okay, so is it certain that?
Mm-hmm.
Same fault.
Okay, so...
And concrete culvert, and it's busted, so...
Collapsing or, uh, uh, he said, if there's a tin horn that's falling apart.
So I thought I heard ten thousand dollars, is that an estimate or?
Ten thousand if he doesn't do the asphalt. Don't quote me on this, but I believe he said like ten-five if they put asphalt on it. But he will send me a quote tomorrow, I'll pass it through.
Any questions? Hmm?
Did you get a Patterson quote?
Won't be out till Friday.
You need both of them?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're saying right from...
No, not technically.
We would have probably had this done earlier, but, um, um, what is, what is... Okay, the maintenance over transportation's the one that asked us to wait till after homecoming. And that's why we had to put this off, don't laugh.
So is it an emergency?
So it's an emergency.
I believe we're not having homecoming.
Right.
Who is the people that's in Mills Street?
Anchor Construction.
Anchor.
Chuck Vittor?
We need to, we need to contact him.
I'll call him, I mean, he's coming tomorrow to pick up the check.
Okay, see if he'll go and look at that and give support.
I'll ask him.
That was, that was another one that somebody mentioned today. It's Chuck Vittor?
Yes.
All right, uh, any more questions?
We don't have any, we don't have any quotes.
What's the time of this period of special?
I think that.
Seventy-two hours.
I think that very smart is.
They think it depends on emergency, sort of.
Correct.
I can walk them for you.
Emergency's, we have to have, emergency's have to two hours, two hours.
Move to table. Until, until more information is.
Table it. So you say you need it?
Please, he might vote.
Oh, I thought you said, okay.
I'll switch.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Misha? Okay. Okay, let's see, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two, ten? Was this resolution? Discuss, consider, uh, action on ordinance twenty twenty-two, ten eleven, appointing David Hamilton as the city attorney. I thought we already knew this.
Yeah, not the ordinance.
Only one, the one that we just signed.
I was going to ask if our attorney could repeat this, but I guess that.
Yeah.
And approve that statement.
All right, make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash ten national level. An ordinance of the city of Ladona County, Texas, appointing David Hamilton, attorney-at-law as the city attorney.
Second. All in favor? Okay, B, discuss and consider action to allow Chet Simmons to lease Old City Barn to park his truck. It's hard to believe it's been a year.
He said, you ain't been riding on that truck.
All right, I'll make a motion to allow Chet Simmons to lease Old City Barn to park truck.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss and consider action to move our regular city, city council meeting. We need it, uh, for the attorney to be on the third Monday of the month.
I make a motion to move the regular meeting to the third Monday of the month.
Any seconds? Russell, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, right now, we're going to convene in the special executive session. Close session, looks like it's eight fourteen, I think.
He can read it there, just didn't know what he was.
Debbie? Raul?
You know, cowboy.
And the other one is Paul Moody. You going to make the motion?
Can.
Uh, we are back in session, it looks like it's, uh, nine thirty-eight?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Russell, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Okay, um, make a motion, uh, for the mayor to ex, extend offers as discussed to Debbie, Raul, and Paul Moody.
And what?
Debbie, Raul, and Paul Moody to extend offers.
Oh, Paul Moody, okay.
What's it for?
Well, let's let it pass, then I guess I can tell you after the meeting, okay? Uh, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anybody wants to make a motion to convene?
De convene?
De convene.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
At nine thirty-nine PM.
Is that for the part-time re- to meet?